So last week, we started talking about the nature of God focusing especially on the Trinity and it was an interesting session which I obviously raised a lot of questions because the Trinity is a challenging topic, you know. God is nothing like humans, you know, he differs from us in so many different ways. And the Lord, when we think of a being, we think about, in other words, we see a clearly defined structure, we think of the physical world. When we think about a being, we think shape, we think form. So that's what really limits our understanding. Meanwhile, the Bible makes it clear that God is Spirit, you know. So whilst he can appear in a form, his essence, in his essence, he is Spirit. And you cannot discern a spirit with your eyes. A spirit can take on a form that can then be discerned with the eyes, you know, by sight, but you cannot ordinarily discern a spirit. Therefore, when you are trying to describe the nature of a spirit, you're just running problems because there's nothing else like that that you can easily draw on. You can't say, "The example maybe will help me to explain it better." So you will run into difficulties. What I did last week to try and use cell biology to try and explain why we have God in three persons. And whilst it was helpful to some, not everybody would have bought into that. And that's just normal because there are limitations with every analogy that you will use. Because God, in his essence, is different from the way we humans are. We are physical, he is not. So that was last week, but I decided to, this week, would take a slightly different, and we'll take a slight detail from that. We're still discussing the nature of God, but in order to go to the next step, to understand things better, I felt it was necessary to start talking about angels. And hopefully, you know, Irene had asked that question about angels or angelic visitations, et cetera. So I thought this is a good time to start talking about that. So let's get right into it. Angels in the Bible. The first mention of angelic beings in the Bible is found in Genesis, chapter 3, "After God no drove man out of the garden." So we know that the Lord drove Adam and Eve out of the garden when they sinned. And then the Bible says, "He placed a cherub, a cherubim, at the east of the garden of Eden, and a flaming sword, which turned every way to guard the way to the tree of life." Genesis, chapter 3, verse 24. Cherubs are considered to be angelic beings. So essentially, this is the first instance of, you know, an angel appearing on earth in the garden, okay? That's about all that we know. You might find some isolated passages somewhere in talking about this, but not much else. You know, you won't learn an awful lot from this passage. Now, the word angel is not used in that passage in Genesis, chapter 3, but it's used in Genesis, chapter 16, which is the first mention of the term angel. This is also when the angel of the Lord finds, it's written Sarah, but it's actually Hagar. So the angel of the Lord finds Hagar while she's fleeing from Sarah and tells her to go back home. Some of you will be aware of, will be familiar with this story. It's a story of Abraham's slave, Hagar. Abraham acquired this slave during his trip, you know, when he escaped to Egypt. You know, there was famine in the promised land and Abraham traveled to Egypt to get away from the famine. He came back, he came back with Hagar. Hagar was, you know, a slave girl in the house. And at some point, Sarah advised Abraham to sleep with Hagar so that he could have a child. It was very common practice in those days. If a woman could not have a child, she could get her servant to have a child with her husband. So that's what she did. But when Hagar fell pregnant, she started to be sort of maybe a little bit unruly, disrespectful towards her, towards her Arabic, because she probably thought, "Well, I can have a child, you can't," kind of thing. So Sarah dealt harshly with her and Hagar fled. When she fled, the angel of the Lord found her. Now let's read about, "Behold, you are with child and you shall bear a son. You shall call his name Ishmael, because the Lord has heard your affliction. He shall be..." I think we've missed, there's a whole part that is missing for some reason, not quite sure what happened to my slide. But essentially, the angel of the Lord, I wanted you to focus on that particular phrase, "The angel of the Lord found her and said to her, 'Behold, you are with child and you shall bear a son; you shall call his name Ishmael, because the Lord has heard your affliction. He shall be a wild man; his hand shall be against every man, and every man's heart against him.'" So after this experience, Hagar called the name, now watch this, called the name of the Lord, of the Lord who, she called the name of the Lord who spoke to her. "You are the God who sees me," which is El Roy, something like that. "You are the Lord who sees me, for she said, 'Have I also here seen he who sees me?'" Genesis, chapter 16, verse 7 to 13. That's the longer passage, but for some reason, part of it has been truncated. So this is the first mention of the term angel, but specifically the phrase, "The angel of the Lord," is used in this particular passage. And it says, "When Hagar," I keep calling her Sarah, "when Hagar had that experience, she said, 'He called the name of the Lord who spoke to her.'" She didn't call the name of the angel who spoke to her, she called the name of the Lord who spoke to her. "You are the God who sees me." It's a little confusing, isn't it? If the Lord appeared to her, she could say, "Yes, I'll call you this." But it says, "An angel of the Lord, angel of the Lord, appeared to her." So just bear that in mind. The next time, the next angelic visitation, as related to the birth of Jesus, we're going to be jumping all over the place. "Now, in the sixth month, the angel Gabriel was sent to a city of Galilee named Nazareth, to a virgin beheaded to a man whose name was Joseph, of the house of David. The virgin's name was Mary, and having come in, the angel said to her, 'Rejoice, highly favored one, the Lord is with you; blessed are you among women.' But when she saw him, she was troubled at his saying, and considered what matter of greeting this was. Then the angel said to her, 'Do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God. And behold, you will conceive in your womb and bring forth a son, and shall call his name Jesus. He will be great and will be called the son of the highest. And the Lord God will give him the throne of his father David, and he will reign over the house of Jacob forever and its kingdom, and of his kingdom there will be no end.'" Luke, chapter 1, verses 26 to 33. So here it says specifically, "The angel Gabriel," there, remember I said, "He called him the angel of the Lord." Okay. Next visitation, "Then an angel of the Lord appeared to him." Now this is referring to Zaccharias. You remember the story of Zaccharias? Zaccharias was a priest and he was a vision of a badger, something like that. And it was his turn to burn incense and to offer prayers in the temple. So he stepped into the holy place of the temple. The temple had three chambers, the first was the, or rather, had two chambers and then the outer court. The outer court is where everyone was allowed to come to, so that's where people worshiped. But there was an inner chamber, I mean, the first chamber called the holy, the holy place, which is where the priests went to offer incense and to trim the lamp. And then there was the most holy place that only the high priest could go to once a year, and that after offering a sacrifice for himself. Zaccharias went into the holy place and there he saw an angel. "Then an angel of the Lord appeared to him, standing on the right side of the altar of incense. And when Zaccharias saw him, he was troubled and fear fell upon him. The angel said to him, 'Do not be afraid, Zaccharias, for your prayer is heard; and your wife Elizabeth will bear you a son, and you shall call his name John. And you will have joy and gladness, and many will rejoice at his birth. He will be great in the sight of the Lord; he shall drink neither wine nor strong drink; he will also be filled with the holy spirit even from his mother's womb; and he will turn many of the children of Israel to their Lord, their God.'" So here it says, "An angel of the Lord." An angel of the Lord. Let's carry on. The angel continues, "He will also go before him in the spirit and power of Elijah to turn the hearts of the fathers to the children, and the disobedience to the wisdom of the just, to make ready a people prepared for the Lord." And Zaccharias said to the angel, "How shall I know this? For I am an old man, and my wife is well advanced in years." And the angel said, the angel answered and said to him, "I am Gabriel, who stands in the presence of God, and was sent to speak to you and bring you these glad tidings. But behold, you will be mute and not able to speak until the day these things take place, because you did not believe my words, which will be fulfilled in their own time." Luke, chapter 1, verses 11 to 20. Okay. So where did I stop? So it said, "stands in the presence of God," yes, "and was sent to speak to you and bring you these glad tidings. Behold, you be mute and not be able to speak until the day these things take place, because you did not believe my words." So here you can see that we're talking about, again, the angel Gabriel. The angel identifies himself clearly as the angel Gabriel. Okay. Now we know another story in the Bible. There are lots of angelic visitations, but what we're doing is we're just going through some of them to sort of prepare the ground. Peter, set free by an angel. Peter was kept in prison. This was after James had been killed by Herod. Herod arrested James, the brother of John, and killed him. And when he saw that, that pleased the religious Jews, he decided to do the same to Peter. And he arrested Peter, put him in prison, planning on killing him. Now, Peter was kept in prison, but constant prayer was offered to God for him by the church. And when Herod was about to bring him out that night, Peter was sleeping, bound with two chains between two soldiers. And the guards before the door were keeping the prison. Now behold, an angel of the Lord stood by him, and a light shone in the prison, and he struck Peter on the side and raised him up, saying, "Arrive quickly." And his chains fell off his hands. Then the angel said to him, "Guard yourself and tie on your sandals." And so he did. And he said to Peter, "Put on your garment and follow me." So he went out and followed him, and did not know that what was done by the angel was real, but thought he was seeing a vision. When they were past the first and the second guard post, they came to the iron gate that leads to the city, which opened to them of its own accord. And they went out and went down one street, and immediately the angel departed from him. And when Peter had come to himself, he said, "Now I know for certain that the Lord has sent his angel and has delivered me from the hand of Herod and from all the expectation of the Jewish people." Acts 12, verse 5 to 11. Okay. Spotlight on the angelic visitations that we've just examined. What we'll see is that angels act as a messenger. They bring a message or they come to perform a task. They have names, except the example that I gave for the angel of the Lord that appeared to Hagar. They speak to people and they refer to God in third person. Let me go back and explain what I mean. When Zaccharias expressed doubts about what the angel had said, the angel said, "I am Gabriel, who stands in the presence of God." In other words, he identified himself very clearly, saying, "Look, I'm an angel and you are a priest. You know the scriptures. You've read about the angel Gabriel. That angel Gabriel that you've read about, that's me. And I'm not doing this of my own accord. I'm standing here in the presence of God. I have been sent to speak to you and to bring these glad tidings." What you can see is the angel identifies himself. He's not, if nobody questioned him about his name, he just freely identified himself, told Zaccharias's name, told him his mission, made it clear he's doing this instead of, you know, as he's standing in the presence of God, he's been sent and he's bringing a message, very clear. The angel is, in this case, is not here really to have any deep interaction with Zaccharias. He is a messenger sent just to bring a message. When you examine the example of Peter with the angel, the angel hardly spoke. He came, woke him up, told him to dress, get dressed, and when he got dressed, told him to follow him, took him out, and that was it. Said nothing, then left the scene. So it's important that we capture that image of an angel at work, sent to do something, who doesn't interact with the people that they've been sent to on a deep level, because their job is not to draw attention to themselves. Their job is to draw attention to God. Remember, there was an angel who thought he could be as good as God, who sought to draw attention to himself. That angel is a fallen angel and his name is the devil. Angels serving in the presence of God don't seek to draw attention to themselves. They have a message, they have a job, they are very focused. You cannot distract them from what they've been sent to do. They will come in, they will do what they're supposed to do, and they will leave when they are finished. Very, very important. Okay. Now let's look at some of the characteristics of angels. The first one is to do with traveling. Now, yeah, while I was speaking in prayer, "Even the man Gabriel whom I had seen in the vision at the beginning, being caused to fly swiftly, touched me about the time of the evening oblation." Now let me give you the context, this from Daniel, chapter 9, verse 21. In Daniel, chapter 9, Daniel sets, you know, starts a fast and he tries, and he sets out to seek the face of the Lord, because he's troubled by the fact that 70 years have almost passed and he's not seen the, or passed already, and he's not seeing the fulfillment of the prophecy concerning his people, concerning Israel and Jerusalem. So he seeks the face of the Lord and the Lord sends the angel Gabriel to come and give him explanation as to what's going on. Now, whilst we could pause and really, really analyze that whole experience, the thing I just want to focus on is that Daniel writes specifically that the angel was caused to fly swiftly. In other words, it flew, it traveled and came. Okay? Now, when you analyze the book of Daniel, what you discover is that in one of the chapters, Daniel is trying, or it might even be this very chapter, Daniel's prayer, the answer to his prayer is delayed. And when the angel comes, the angel says, "At the beginning, when the commandment was given, I was sent forth," or rather, "At the beginning of your supplication, when you started praying, immediately you started praying, God sent me out to you." That passage, for me, it's very encouraging, because sometimes many of us think that, you know, we have to pray for three, four, five days before God hears. We have to pray for a week or month before God hears. We have to go on endless fasting before God hears. That passage says, "At the beginning of your supplication, the commandment was sent, was given, and I was sent out to you. However, the prince of Persia which stood me." So in this particular case, the angel Gabriel had been sent out with an answer to Daniel's prayer, but was which stood by a demonic angel. We're not going to go into the technicalities of that, but was which stood by this angel and therefore the answer to the prayer was delayed. So that itself tells you that when, when there are delays to answers, it's not necessarily because God has got his arms folded, saying, "You know what, I just need you to pray a little bit louder, maybe fast a few more days. You know what, you haven't suffered enough." That's not God doing that. There are other factors that come into play. Why, yes, why answers to prayers are delayed? There are so many reasons, so many reasons, some of which we don't understand, I don't understand. But what is important for us not to, we shouldn't jump to conclude, the conclusion that if you're not getting answers, because God hasn't released it. Because the book of Daniel shows you that there can be other reasons why answers are delayed. Of course, some people jump on that bandwagon and they start a whole new ministry of how they are going to break down some barriers and... We're not going to go into that today, but just don't make too much of this particular thing, you know, in this Daniel, chapter 21, where, you know, in Daniel, chapter 9, sorry, where the angel, a demonic, a demon, rather, essentially which stood, which stood the angel Gabriel. But what I want you to pick up from here, for the sake of this topic, is that the angel had to travel. It had to arrive and was stopped. And when it was stopped, he could not get to his destination. He had to win the battle to get to the destination. Well, when it comes to God, he is only present. He doesn't have to travel to get to you. Jesus doesn't have to travel to get to you. The Holy Spirit doesn't need to get traveled to get to you. He is everywhere. This is the superiority of our covenant compared to Daniel's. Maybe an angel can be stopped on the way. I'm not praying to an angel, I'm praying to my Father, who by the power of the Holy Spirit is in me. I speak to him because he's here and he provides empowerment through the Holy Spirit. So if you like the blockade that Daniel suffered, God has bypassed it by coming to dwell inside you. Daniel had to just pray and wait. You are not in the same position as Daniel. You, God has come to live in you more than that you are inside Christ. So because you are in him and he is in you, this barrier, there had to be, you know, that barrier there, or rather, the distance or the gap that angel Gabriel had to travel, that, I can't get my words right. But you know what I mean? There was a gap between Daniel and God. And the angel had to travel within that to get to Daniel, but not with you and me. You don't worry about gaps anywhere. God made Emmanuel, God is with us. He came to dwell with us and then he moved inside us. So because he's here, we are not worried about angels moving here, but which angel am I trying to get in touch with when Baba himself is inside me? Are those angels more powerful than the God that is in me? No. So that's why a true child of God does not focus on angels. We'll show you a passage in the Bible that will show you why, as a believer, you should not be focused on angels. If anybody comes to you and starts talking about, "Yes, angels, I had this angelic visitation," and he is going into mysticism. He is trying to use the angelic so-called visitations to beef up his own sense of importance and to validate his message, to get you to think he's somebody. In Galatians, Paul wrote, "Though we, oh, an angel, oh, an angel, should preach a different gospel than the one we preached to you before." Listen to what Paul says, "Let him be accursed." Paul was not afraid to say that angels should be accursed if he should preach a gospel different from the one that he preached. Paul wrote to the Corinthians, he said, "Don't you know we shall judge angels? What business do you have hanging around for an angel? What business? Has nothing to do with you. Don't you value the Father more than you value the angels? Don't you value the Son more than you value angels? He's in you. God lives in you. So if God lives in you, why are you concerned about angels? You don't get involved at all. It's cannality that drives people to look for angels. Let's continue reading. "I, John, am the one who heard and saw these things. And when I heard and saw, I fell down to worship at the feet of the angel, who showed me these things. But he said to me, 'Do not do that. I am a fellow servant of yours and of your brethren, the prophets, and of those who heed the words of this book.'" Worship God. So another characteristic of angels, they don't accept worship. Now, when I say they don't accept worship, I'm not saying that they don't accept bowing to them. Worship takes different forms. Worship can be in the form of attention. Yes. When people worship celebrities, what do they do? Do they bow down and pray to them? They give them their attention. Attention is actually one of the highest forms of worship. When God says, "Worship him," what do you think he's talking about? Your attention, your focus. When he says, "Love the Lord with all your heart," what is he talking about? Your focus, your attention. So if you pay attention to angels, what do you think you are doing? You are worshiping angels. And there's scripture that is explicit about that. There's another passage in Revelation, chapter 19, verse 10, "And I fell at his feet to worship him." This is again, John being overwhelmed by his revelation. He was seeing mighty things in the heavens and he saw this angel. Some of the angels looked so awesome, he thought he was, I don't know what he, who he thought he was seeing. And he said to him, "See thou, do it not. I am thy fellow servant. I am thy fellow servant." I haven't analyzed that particular phrase, whether he means that I am a servant just like you, or that I am one of the servants supposed to be ministering to you. "And of thy brethren that have the testimony of Jesus." Worship God. For the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy, Revelation 19, 10. So again, this angel says, "Not me, oh, not me, oh, don't turn your attention to me, oh." Worship God. Worship God. In the culture of those days, the way you honored somebody was by prostrating before him. So you see that even in, even in the book of Revelation, you see, so there's, the way to honor somebody, worship, they prostrate or bow. How culture, the modern cultures, we don't really do that. There are still some cultures around the world, like in Nigeria, you know, that tribes where, you know, they bow or they... you know, that tribes were, you know, they, they bow or they, they like, they prostrate themselves. So there's still some, some cultures, but many cultures, you know, I think the Japanese also do that, you know, maybe some other, other eastern cultures do that, but it fizzled out of many other cultures, you know, so that's not how we honor somebody, by bowing, but giving them our undivided attention. That's one of the ways in which we honor people. So it has taken the place of honoring, they're taking the place of bowing, of prostrating yourself or be before them, giving them your undivided attention. So imagine somebody saying, I spend time with my angel. He comes to Vienna. That scares me. Do you know why it scares me? Because the true angels, they would be scared to do something like that. They would be scared to take honor that belongs to God. So can you imagine somebody saying that this is what I do regularly? Who is he actually meeting with? That is a big, big, big worry. And if something like that should be said from the pulpit, then my goodness, who are you listening to? Who are you listening to? The angels don't want attention. You saw the angel that came to deliver Peter from prison. Didn't introduce himself, didn't say anything, say, quick, 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 gather your clothes, okay, okay, yeah, let's go. Finish the job done. Focused. You saw the angels that went to, um, Lot's house, those two angels. Lot invited them in, they said, no, 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 we are, look, we have to, no, Lot said, please, I'm begging you, come in. Brought them in, of course, the, the sort of minds wanted to do what they wanted to do. The angels came out, struck them with blindness, told them, do you have any family here? If you do, get them quickly because we have under express instruction. Time is ticking. Quick, 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 move. No time to gather your goods. Just grab your loved ones. Let's be out of here. Quick, because unless you leave this place, we can't do it. We are under strict instructions. When you read it, those angels kept identifying with instructions that they had received. And they were focused. They were not there to play games with Lot. They were not there of their own accord to say, no, Lot, you know, we'll hang, okay, we like it here, maybe we'll hang out around another couple of days, maybe we'll do this. So no, we are under strict instructions. Angels are ministering spirits, Hebrews chapter one. In other words, they are servants, they are servants. They take instructions and they execute. They don't hang around, they don't mess around, they are not, and anybody's beck and call. Some people say, eh, you, you order your angel around, or you bring your, invite your angel. You will invite demons eh? If you can show me in the Bible, fine. But the Bible that I've been reading, I've not, I've not seen anything like that eh. What I've seen is angels receiving their instructions directly from the Father. Now, when they get it, they come, they don't play around, they get the job done and they leave. They are not, they are not there to listen to, take instructions from you. Otherwise, so, something bad could happen to us. You could become, you would be fallen, you would be living according to the flesh. They're still ordering your angel about. You could be filled with wicked ideas and order your angel. If your angel is there to listen to you, I could send him to go and deal with my enemies, couldn't I? And there are people saying things like that. No. They are ministering spirits. They are being sent to minister to you and me, but really, we pray to the Father, or we pray to the Father who is inside us. And what we do is the Father that decides if an angel is required in the answering of the prayer. That's up to him. That's, 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 you see, there are things that have been given to us. There are things that lie within our power, and there are things that don't lie within our power. The heaven of the heavens is in the heavens, belong to the Lord. But the earth, he has given to the sons of men. So this is our domain. Heaven is his domain. Angels don't belong here, they belong to heaven. So who do you think gives instructions to them? It's the heavenly Father. It's the commander of the host of heaven, not you and I, or any man of God for that matter. But to which of the angels said he at any time, sit on my right hand until I make thine enemies thy footstool. This is a question. Which of the angels, to which of the angels did God say, okay? Sometimes we don't really understand what he's saying. What he's saying is that which of the angels did God say to, to, to which of the angels did God say, okay, come and be my equal? That's what he's saying here. Because sit on my right hand means come and be my right-hand man. So he was saying, which of the angels was ever exalted to the position of equality with God? That's the question he's asking. They are not in that position. And, and, and hold that thought because it's going to be important in the, in the next stage of the Bible study. Are they not ministering spirits? Sent forth to minister for them who shall be heirs of salvation. So they've been sent forth. By whom? No, by you and me, by, it's by him, to minister to those of us who be heirs of salvation. Hebrews chapter one, thirteen to fourteen, verse thirteen, fourteen. Angels have a name. You heard already, the angel Gabriel, he identified himself as Gabriel. And he came to pass when I, I, even I, Daniel, had seen the vision and sought for the meaning. Then behold, there stood before me as the appearance of a man. And I heard a man's voice between the banks of Uly, it's a river, which called and said, Gabriel, make this man to understand the vision. So he came near where I stood, and where, when he came, I was afraid and fell upon my face. But he said unto me, understand, O son of man, for the time of the end shall be the vision, Daniel chapter eight, verse fifteen to seventeen. So this was, this was the first time that the angel Gabriel that appeared to Daniel. And then subsequently, he appeared in chapter nine, which we've already read about. But what the point I want to make here is a voice called from between the banks of the river in I, say, Uly, saying, Gabriel, make this man to understand the vision. I want you to, 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 to just imagine this. Who was this person screaming to Gabriel? Gabriel wasn't another man, even though he says, I heard a man's voice. Whoever was saying this, there was authority in his voice. He was higher. He was greater than Gabriel. But we're not going to go into that yet. Another passage, then he said, do you know why I have come to you? And now I must return to fight with the prince of Persia. This is the passage that I referred to earlier. And when I have gone forth, indeed, the prince of Greece will come. But I will tell you what is noted in the scripture of truth. No one upholds me against these except Michael your praise. So here, there's the name of another angel is mentioned, Michael. So you can see the angel, my angels have names. They don't always mention it, but they have names. Okay, so let's sum up some of the characteristics of angels that we've learned so far. The servants of God sent to minister to believers. The word angel actually means messenger. In both the Hebrew and the Greek, the word angel means messenger. So when you hear the, the, the angel, there's the angel that means messenger. You will, those of you that have read in the Revelation chapters one to three, you'll, you'll be, you'll be familiar with, you know, the message, the servants, churches. And to the angel of the church at Titera, write. And you wonder, the angel of the church, did the church have an angel? He was talking about the messenger. And so many people believe that it's referring to the chief elder or, or the pastor of the church, that it wasn't referring to an angel. You people don't write down things for angels. So he wasn't referring to angels. But the word angelos, the Greek word, angelos was used. Shouldn't you, that the word angelos is not restricted to angelic beings, can also be used in other contexts. It means messenger. Angels is because angels are often sent with a message from God. Or they come to perform a specific assignment on the earth. Angels have names, they do not accept worship, and they have limitations. They are not omnipresent or omniscient. Angels have to travel. Good. I think I'm going to stop here and ask if there are any questions because it's a topic that I suspect, you know, there'll be questions, so please feel free. If you have any questions at, at this point, please unmute yourself and let me know. Okay. If there are no questions, then I will move on. With that preamble, we are going to now talk about something else that advertised on the platform by the angel of the Lord. We've learned something about angels in general that are, that apply across the board. Yet when you come to, when you start to do a study of angels, in other words, if you say you take a Concordance or you, you do a Bible search on Bible Gateway, and you search for the word, say, angel, it will bring up all mentions of the word, eh eh, or the word angel. And you'll discover, if you start studying each one of them, you'll discover a very interesting phenomenon. The characteristics that we listed earlier, we did that for a reason. If we start applying those characteristics to these other examples that you'll see, you discover something doesn't quite add up. And that's what we're now going to be talking about. Now, Jesus, when he was on earth, he kept telling people that the scriptures were written about him. He said, for example, you search the scriptures because you think you have eternal life in them. And they testify about me, John chapter five, verse thirty-nine. On the road to Emmaus, you remember in Luke chapter twenty-four, Jesus, after his resurrection, met two men, two disciples that were heading towards Emmaus, which is like a day's journey from Jerusalem. And on the way, Jesus just joined them as they were talking about Jesus's death and resurrection. And Jesus began to explain to them how that the Messiah was supposed to come, then was supposed to die, then he was supposed to resurrect, then was supposed to be received into heaven, essentially, everything about Jesus. And the Bible says, he be, began with Moses and all the prophets and explained to them what was said in all the scriptures concerning himself. Luke twenty-four, verse twenty-seven. The point I'm making is that the Bible is about Jesus. The Old Testament is about Jesus. The New Testament is about Jesus. God created the heavens and the earth, Genesis chapters one and two. In chapter three, sin appeared on the scene. And as soon as sin appeared on the scene, God announced the Messiah. So the seed of the woman bruised the head of the serpent. Not bruise, um, the seed of the woman would, would, yeah, would crush the head of the serpent. The serpent bruised the heel of the, of the seed of the woman. And the seed of the woman here is referring to Jesus. So Jesus is there on the pages of the Bible, right from the beginning, except it's hidden. And there's the need to search deeper to be able to discover him. It's the reason why the Jews of Jesus's day, they struggled with the idea that he could be the Messiah. They were concerned. They looked at him and said, no, 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 this is not what we are expecting. Yes, not you. And but when the Holy Spirit gave people understanding, like in this particular instance, Jesus opened the Bible and he revealed what was written about himself to the disciples. And the Bible says that whilst he was talking, their heart was burning inside them. But they did not figure out that it was Jesus until when they arrived at Emmaus, they sat down to eat. Jesus took the bread, broke the bread, prayed, and then they said, oh, that must be him, and then he disappeared. It's a big lesson there, but we're not going to be going into that. Another passage, for Moses truly said to the fathers, the Lord your God will raise up for you a prophet like me from your brethren. Him you shall hear in all things, whatever he says to you, Acts chapter three, verses twenty-two to twenty-three. This is actually quoting a passage from, I think, Deuteronomy. Yes, quoting a passage from Deuteronomy. This is Peter addressing the crowd. And Peter saying that God had promised that he would send a prophet like Moses. Other Old Testament prophets about Jesus labeled him as a Messiah. The Messiah, the Anointed One. But did you know that the term Anointed One wasn't only just used in relation to Jesus, it was used in relation to priests? It was used in relation, in relation to, um, even King Cyrus, King David. So it wasn't exclusive. It's only in the book of Daniel that the term is made clearer. Daniel calls the Messiah the ruler, the prince. Then you come to Isaiah, and what do you discover? Isaiah describes Jesus as what? God's servant, the suffering servant. Surely he has born our griefs and carried our sorrows, yet we esteem him stricken, smitten by God and afflicted. But he was wounded for our transgressions. He was bruised for our iniquities. The chastisement for our peace was upon him, and by his stripes we are healed. All we like sheep have gone astray, and we have turned everyone to his own way. And the Lord has laid on him the iniquity of us all. He was oppressed and was afflicted, yet he opened not his mouth. He was led as a lamb to the slaughter, and as a sheep before it shears a silent, so he opened not his mouth. But his knowledge, by his knowledge, my righteous servant shall justify many, for he shall bear their iniquities. You probably wonder, where is he going with this? Just bear with me. I was watching in the night visions, and behold, one like the son of man coming with the clouds of heaven. He came to the ancient of days, and they brought him near before him. Then to him was given dominion and glory and a kingdom that all peoples, nations, and languages should serve him. His dominion is an everlasting dominion, which shall not pass away in his kingdom, the one which shall not be destroyed, Daniel chapter seven. Um, thirteen to fourteen, I don't think I've quoted this very well. Seven, thirteen to fourteen. Okay. Now, you've just, we've just read, this is, we're going to be linking this to the angelic visitations in a minute. But we've just read about how God referred to Jesus as his servant. But when he revealed Jesus or revealed the, the, the prophecy about Jesus's coming to Moses, do you know how he referred to Moses, to Jesus as prophet? So Moses receives a revelation, and the revelation is that God is going to send a prophet like himself to his people. So he told them, God is going to send a prophet, so the people are waiting for a prophet. Then Isaiah says, my suffering servant, there's going to be someone that is going to suffer for his people, and by his sufferings, he will bring salvation and healing. Okay. They accept that. Daniel says, he's going to send a prince, a ruler, Messiah, the ruler. Okay. So can you imagine the confusion in the mind of a Jew? Who exactly are you going to be expecting? Is it a suffering servant crucified? Is it a suffering servant crucified in weakness? Or is it going to be a king arriving on horseback? Or is it going to be a prophet going about like Jeremiah or Elijah? So the conclusion, many of them think this is referring to different people. Then there are rabbis today who say, actually, there will be two types of, there will be two messiahs. They call one, they say, one will be the son of Joseph and one is going to be the son of someone else. And one will be like this, or the one will be like that, because they can't reconcile it. Because among humans, it's not possible to find somebody who can fit all these descriptions. It's not possible for one person to be a prophet and a suffering servant at the same time. You and I know the people of power in this world, both in the church and without. They don't also go about being the most humble, they don't, they are not the most modest. If you see their Mercedes alone, you will know that, yes. You see their jet, so they were, it's not possible among humans. It's not possible to find all of that in one person. So they struggled to accept or to believe that Jesus was the son of God. Believe, in fact, let me not throw in son of God. The one that Daniel prophesied about, because Daniel said he was going to be Messiah the prince. Only for him to be born in Bethlehem in a manger and to grow up in Galilee, despised Galilee. Galilee of the Gentiles, as they used to call it, they just couldn't marry the two things in their heads. Now, imagine throwing into that mix Messiah, the prince, prophet, servant. There are so many other prophecies about Jesus in which he takes on a different role. Imagine throwing into that mix, son of God. It was all the religious Jews could take. They picked up stones ready to stone him to death. John chapter eight, John chapter ten. They couldn't handle it because it was like, what is this man talking about? We don't even believe that you are Messiah, we don't even believe that you are prophet. Now you say you are son of God, he must be joking. So the human mind has limitations. It can't, it creates categories. You and I, the way we think, we have category, everything is categorized. Dog is a dog, a cat is a cat, sheep, sheep, you know, that's how we think. We have objects and then we have clearly defined characteristics of the object. And then that's how we think, how we code information and then we use it. But you're talking about somebody stepping into our dimension from a different dimension. He was spirit. And he stepped into our life, our lives to manifest his. Therefore, in Martin chapter sixteen, verses thirteen to seventeen, let's read this passage. When Jesus came into the region of Caesarea Philippi, he asked his disciples, saying, who do men say that I, the son of man, am? So they said, some say John the Baptist, some say Elijah, and others Jeremiah, or one of the prophets. Let me see how we're doing for time, okay. He said to them, but who do you say that I am? Simon Peter answered and said, you are the Christ, the son of the living God. Jesus answered and said to him, blessed are you, Simon, but Jonah, for flesh and blood has not revealed this to you. But my father, who is in heaven. He's sixteen, thirteen to seventeen. Why did, can you please mute yourself, please? Why did Jesus suggest Peter's confession had been inspired by God? It's because to, to the human mind, it wasn't possible to add on the label of son of God. All the different characteristics that they were already struggling with. For Peter to then make the quantum leap to say, ah, you are the son of God, you are not just the Messiah, but you are also the son of God. Said, no, flesh and blood has not revealed this to you. No, 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 this one, you didn't do it yourself. My father revealed it to you. Therefore, to discover the identity of Jesus, we need the Holy Spirit's help. We need the Holy Spirit to reveal to us who Jesus is. If we're just going to go about it, one plus one equals two, using our own mind. We won't know him, we won't understand him, we won't know it. It takes the Spirit of God to reveal Jesus to you. And then when you see who he is, his magnitude, his beauty. Then you are ready to work with him. Okay, so advertise the angel of the Lord, the angel of the Lord. We've already come across this concept, the angel of the Lord in Genesis chapter sixteen. Hagar met the angel of the Lord. So that's the passage. Now, the angel of the Lord found her by a spring of water in the wilderness. By the spring on the way to Sheer, Sheer was just next to Egypt. And he said, Hagar, Sarah's maid, where have you come from and where are you going? She said, I'm fleeing from the presence of my mistress Sarai. The angel of the Lord said to her, return to your mistress and submit yourself under her hand. Then the angel of the Lord said to her, I will multiply your descendants exceedingly. So that they shall not be counted for multitude. And the angel of the Lord said to her, behold, you are a child and you shall bear a son. You shall call his name Ishmael, because the Lord has had your affliction. He shall be a wild man, his hand shall be against every man and every man's hand against him. Then she called the name of the Lord who spoke to her, you are the God who sees. For she said, have I also seen him? Who sees me? Genesis sixteen, seven to thirteen. So now I'm going to go around and ask questions. I'm going to come to, you know, in each of each of you, because it's going to be interactive. So I'll come to you, Reverend Quacey. Can you tell any difference, okay, is there a difference between how this angel of the Lord spoke to Hagar? And the way the other angelic visitations went? What do you think?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, if, if the way the, this particular angel spoke has not just mentality that has authority, it speaks on its own comparatively to the others. They seems to voice out what has been told them. For instance, Gabriel said, I am sent to do this, but this particular angel seems to suggest as if it has authority to speak on its own.
Thank you very much, thank you, well spotted. Let me come to you, Sue, what do you think? Anything to add to what Reverend had just said? Or if you have a different view, please let us know.
No, not, nothing different from what Reverend said, I also think that the angel spoke in almost like in his own authority, yeah.
Okay, good. And so you would agree that the angel Gabriel speaking to Zacharias and to others spoke differently. They clearly were passing on a message, whereas this angel doesn't seem to be passing a message. She, he seems to be interacting directly with Hagar and saying, look, this is what, this is the score. Let's go back and read his words again. He says, return to your mistress and submit yourself under her hand. It just feels like when a child has been naughty, is running away somewhere and an adult goes and scolds the child and just sends it back home, you know, the way it used to be done many years ago in Africa. Your neighbor could tell you off if you, if you messed around, um, it didn't have to be your parents. Then the angel of the Lord said to her, I, I, I will multiply your descendants exceedingly. So that they shall not be counted for multitude. And the angel of the Lord said to her, behold, you are a child, there is authority. It's like, I know what's going on, this is what I'm telling you, you need to do. But the, the most interesting part of it all is that this Egyptian slave girl. Who was, I call her Egyptian slave girl on purpose, not to be, not to be, you know, disparaging in any way. But to suggest that, listen, she was not of the Abrahamic line, lineage. She did not have a covenant with God. She'd been brought in from Egypt as a slave. But having lived with Abraham, it's almost as if she had picked up something. It was almost as if she had detected something. You will discover the same thing with Eliezer, who was Abraham's chief servant. When he was sent out to go and get a wife for Isaac, the way he also talked about God and talked about the whole experience. So you can see that it wasn't an awful lot, but she knew about Abraham's God. And when she saw this angel, she didn't, this angel of the Lord, she didn't think she had seen an angel. She said she called the name of the Lord who spoke to her. In other words, she believed that it was the Lord Adonai who spoke to her. It's very, very interesting. Okay, now we're going to the next passage and again, I'm going to go around and get your responses. Now it came to pass after these things that God tested Abraham and said to him, Abraham. And he said, here I am. Note, God tested Abraham, it says. Then he said, take now your son, your only son Isaac, whom you love and go to the land of Moriah and offer him there as a burning offering on one of the mountains of which I shall tell you. So Abraham rose early in the morning and saddled his donkey and took two of his young men with him and Isaac his son. And he split the wood for the burnt offering and rose and went to the place of which God had told him. Then came to, then they came to the place of which God had told him and Abraham built an altar there and placed the wood in order. And he bound Isaac his son and laid him on the altar upon the wood. Pardon me, and Abraham stretched out his son and took the knife to slay his son. But the angel of the Lord called to him from heaven and said, Abraham, Abraham. So he said, here I am. And he said, do not lay your hand on the lad or do anything to him, for I know that you fear God. Since you have not withheld your son, your only son from me. Genesis twenty two, nine to twelve. What are some of the differences between the above encounter and the ones and the earlier described angelic visitations? So that's the next question. I'm coming, I'm coming to you, Shiloh. Shiloh may not be available. Okay, let's go. Arba, I'll come, coming to you now.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Yeah, I think that this encounter is similar to the one with Hagar.
Okay.
Not like the one, you know, the angel Gabriel or Jacob. I think because it's like, God himself, Adonai himself speaking, speaking directly.
Okay.
Like authoritatively, not.
Okay, so you, okay, so he spoke authoritatively, good, so that's one difference. Can you spot another difference? Okay.
I have to go over the passage again.
Okay, you go over the passage, I'll go on to someone else. If you, if you, if you get it, then you can live in there, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so Irene, you tell me, um, can you spot any, another difference between this passage and the ones we've read earlier about angelic visitations? Okay, you know what, I'll move on to someone else and then you, once you've sorted that out, you can, um, give us your response. Bishop, I'm coming to you now.
Yeah, the angel spoke, as if the Lord, Lord himself speaking. That's how I saw it.
Okay, so angel spoke as if he was the Lord himself speaking. Okay, going back to some of the characteristics of, you know, the angelic visitations. What else can you spell? Yeah, so he spoke authoritatively, he spoke as if he was the Lord himself speaking. Now, if we sort of drill down, why do you think he spoke as the, what is it from this passage that makes it look as if it was the Lord speaking?
Yeah, it was. Um, uh, let me go to the other thing.
Mm hmm.
Since you have not withheld your son, the only son from me. The from me there, it's more authoritative, like, like you are God. So that, that was it for me.
Okay.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, okay, excellent. Good spot. You know, he says, you haven't withheld your son, your only son from me. Now, which angel has the right to say something like that? Do angels accept worship? We already said it, no. A sacrifice would have been one of the highest forms of worship in those days. So there was no way an angel would have accepted a sacrifice. And here, he said, you have withheld, you haven't withheld your son from me. Which means whoever it was that was talking expected worship. And he was also the same person who had already told Abraham to go and sacrifice his son. Yet verse eleven says, he was called the angel of the Lord. And interestingly, unlike all the angelic visitations where the angels traveled down to visit people, this one didn't travel down, he spoke from heaven. Verse eleven, Genesis chapter twenty two, verse eleven, but the angel of the Lord called to him from heaven and said, Abraham, Abraham. Do you know that? I've known this passage for many, many, many years, maybe since I was a child. Because, you know, we used to even have this song, Abraham, Abraham, Abraham. So we've known these scriptures, but it was when I started doing this specific Bible study that it dawned on me that the passage actually said that it was the angel of the Lord that called from heaven. It didn't say that the Lord called from heaven, but the angel of the Lord. Why does the Lord refer to himself as the angel of the Lord? Is the question that we should all be asking. Because clearly this wasn't an ordinary angel. He claimed that sacrifices were being made to him and yet he's calling himself the angel of the Lord, which confuses people because for us, when we think the word angel. Ah, that must be the one with the wings. And yet this angel calls from heaven and expects worship. So note that the angel of the Lord called from heaven rather than arriving on earth. The angel, the angel of the Lord used first person singular pronoun, the first single singular. So he was in I and then me. Now I know that you fear God, since you have not withheld your son, your only son from me. It is clear the angel was also the recipient of the sacrifice. Now we're going to go to another one, very interesting. Jacob's ladder, you probably heard of this story, Jacob was fleeing from his brother, you know, um, Esau. After he had robbed his brother of the birthright and the blessing, he, okay, well, he didn't really rob him of the birthright, he bought it. But then he, he robbed him of the blessing. He had to flee because Esau vowed to kill him. Now, on his way, he landed at a place called Luz, L U Z. And there decided to spend the night. And let's read what happens there. Now Jacob went out from Beersheba and went toward Haran. So he came to a certain place and stayed there all night because the sun had set. And he took one of the stones of that place and put it at his head and he lay down in that place to sleep. Then he dreamed and behold, a ladder was set up on the earth. And its top reached to heaven and the angels of God were ascending and descending on it. And behold, the Lord stood above it and said, I am the Lord, God of Abraham, your father, and the God of Isaac. The land on which you lie, I will give you and your descendants. Genesis twenty eight, ten to thirteen. Note, God says, I am. Note, God says, I am, he says clearly that the Lord stood above the ladder. There is no mistaking who stood above the ladder, the Lord. And he said, I am the Lord God of your father. He said, of your father and, and, and of, um. Of your, of your, the Lord God of Abraham, your father and the God of Isaac. In other words. God identified himself very, very clearly, unequivocally. It was clear. It's me, no one else. Okay, let's read on. Then the angel of God spoke to me in a dream saying, Jacob. And I said, here I am. Now here. Jacob is having a conversation with his wives. He had two wives by that time. And he wanted his two wives to understand his justification for leaving Haran. Jacob had left Beersheba in Israel to le, to move to the land of Canaan, to move to. Haran, to run away from his brother. And there he had fallen in love with Rachel. He ended up marrying Rachel's elder sister because his uncle tricked him into doing so. But he decided to marry Rachel anyway. So he ended up with two wives. During that time, Laban tried to, to rob him many, many times, but the Lord intervened. And here Jacob explains how the Lord intervened and how the Lord was also asking him to go back to Canaan. Okay, so now, let's read. Then the angel of God spoke to me in a dream saying, Jacob. And I said, here I am. And he said, lift your voice now and see all the rams which leap on the flocks are streaked, speckled and gray spotted. For I have seen all that Laban is doing to you. Let me explain what's going on here. Laban being a smart trickster, he told Jacob. That his reward for serving him would be all the animals that had some stripes or something. Some spots or speck, you know, something. Knowing very well. Pardon me, that the sheep would be either all brown or black or, or, or white. The very few would be streaked or speckled or spotted. See how smart that guy was. But God revealed to Jacob in a dream that I have seen what Jacob, what Laban is trying to do to you. And then the Lord said, I am the God of Bethel. In other words, the God that revealed to you, himself to you at Bethel. Where you anointed a pillar and where you made a vow to me. Now arise, get out of this land and return to the land of your family. Genesis thirty-one, verses eleven to thirteen. Let's pause and analyze this. The angel self-identifies as the God of Bethel. He says here clearly, the angel. Of God. Spoke in a dream, saying, I am the God of Bethel. Who is this angel that identifies, self-identifies? Actually, I am the God of Bethel and yet is referred to as the angel of God. This is a rhetorical question. Do you still think it's an ordinary angel? Or do you think it's more than an angel? He stated very clearly. I am the God of Bethel. No angel has the right to call himself God. Lucifer wants to be God, wanted to be God once. But the angels of God in heaven, they have no such ambitions. They will, they refuse worship. They told, yeah, John, don't worship us, worship God. And yet here you are. Someone that identifies as angel, also identifies as the God of Bethel. Now Jacob's wife's response, when Jacob told them this news, this is what they said. Then Rachel and Leah answered and said to him. Is there still any portion or inheritance for us in our father's house? Are we not considered strangers by him? For he has sold us and also completely consumed our money. For all these riches which God has taken from our father are really ours and our children's. Now then, whatever God has said to you, do it. See, Leah and Rachel understood. That Jacob had heard from God. That the angel that spoke to him was actually God. Jacob blesses his grandchildren. This passage is found in Genesis chapter forty-eight, one of the glorious, probably the most glorious moment in Jacob's life. This man that had been playing, playing hide and seek with God all his life. At the very last minute. Pharaoh calls him. And he said, bless me. Imagine that the, the, the king of, I mean, Egypt was the superpower of that day. And the king of that nation calls you, the father of the prime minister of Egypt, Joseph. And says, bless me. The Bible says, without controversy, the greater blesses the lesser. What do you think Pharaoh was saying? I recognize you as being greater than me because you are the man that produced this Joseph. That rescued the whole of Egypt from starvation. I recognize you as being great. And in that split second, it dawned on Jacob. That you know who? Maybe he thought his life was, had come to an end when Joseph was sold into slavery. He thought, he, he was ready to die. But the Lord showed him that the investment he had made in Joseph. In turning him into a, to become a different person than his eleven brothers. Had paid off. And just Joseph had gone ahead of him to do what he could not do. Because he was playing games with God, he could not do. And God showed him at the last minute, this is what you could have become. Had you submitted to me. But don't worry, I've done it through your son anyway. And you get to enjoy the fruit of it. Now the greatest man on earth is asking for your blessing. What do you have to say? Jacob said, my days have been short and evil. He couldn't say anything positive because he dawned on him just how much he had blown it. That I, I could have lived like Abraham. I could have lived like Isaac. I was marooned somewhere. Trying to chase one wife, then another wife, then trying to chase money and confusion. Anyway, that's a Bible study for another day. But Jacob, when he was about to bless his children, his grandchildren, or, or his children actually. Joseph brought his two sons, Ephraim and Manasseh, and said, I want you to bless them as well. And then Joseph, Jacob, decided to put his right hand on Ephraim and the left on Manasseh. Joseph felt it should have been the other way around because Manasseh was the elder, but Jacob said, no. That younger one will be greater than this one. He had learned his lesson. When he was younger, before he was born, a prophecy came out that the older. Shall serve the younger. And him and his mother tried to make that prophecy come through. They did not allow the grace of God to work. Now Jacob understood, the grace of God can be allowed to work. Perhaps I say that's a Bible study for another day. But the lesson here is this, when Jacob was blessing his grandchildren, he said. God before whom my fathers, Abraham and Isaac walked. The God who has fed me all my life long to this day. The angel who has redeemed me from all my evil. Bless the lads. Let my name be named among them and the name of my fathers, Abraham and Isaac. And let them grow in a multitude in the midst of the earth. Genesis forty-eight, twelve to sixteen. I've truncated that passage. So just to round that, because I know time is far spent. Jacob ref, talks about God. In fact, he talks to God. He's asking God to bless. You see, he's been asked to bless his grandchildren, but Jacob is asking God to do it. And in the middle of that sentence, he says, the angel. Which angel is he referring to? Angels are not supposed to be prayed to. Angels are not supposed to be worshipped. Why is he addressing that angel? But then in the same sentence, he says, God. And then he qualifies as the angel who has redeemed me from all my evil. Because the angel had revealed to him the dream, saying, I'm the God of Bethel. Whom you made a vow to, and I'm also the God who stopped Laban from cheating you. So my question to you, to everyone listening today is. Who do you think this angel of the Lord is? And I'm going to go around at each person. Even if you all say the same thing, I'm still going to go around and get your responses, starting with you, Araba. Who is this angel of the Lord? Okay, we have stepped away from your computer. Bishop, who do you think this angel is? The angel of the Lord?
Actually, I would say that, you know, we have God the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. Yeah. Who is an angel of the Lord? It's a messenger. You see, it's the Lord himself, but not the Father. Maybe it could be the son speaking. Because, um, an angel we don't know means it's the, it's God himself speaking to. The person. Because that, that, that's, to my knowledge, that's, that's how I, I perceive it to be.
Good. So I just wanted to hear, get your views. It's the thing is that this is a Bible study. So the evidence is presented before us and then we have to. You know, decide what we believe based on the evidence. And then of course, go back home and study and meditate upon it. But you know what? Rather than just taking some pre-prepared doctrine. About it and say, this is the position. What I've done is just simply giving you the evidence, the biblical evidence. And then you come to your conclusion. And your conclusion is your conclusion. It has nothing to do with me. I don't have to agree with it. I don't have to like it, but it's your conclusion. It's just a case of sharing it with us so that, you know, we can all be blessed. Thank you very much, Bishop. So, uh, Sue, what is your view? What's your conclusion? Who is this angel of the Lord?
I also think it is God, uh, himself speaking, um. I'm not able to tell, um, which of the godheads, but I, I think that it's God speaking.
Okay, good. So you think it's God speaking? Good, um. Shiloh, are you ready to talk now? Who do you think is, the, who do you think the angel of the Lord is?
Okay. Um, for me. Um. Think, I, I was teaching and I'm following, because I haven't actually had chance to look at this thing before. So I was thinking, in my head, I, I was thinking, um, could it be? Um, the translation, because should I take another translation of the Bible? It might refer to it differently. I haven't, like you said, I was thinking, after you finish, I would take the Bible. And read other versions of it and then see how it, it's presented. And that would tell, maybe help me to tell more who is being referred. Secondly, I see it as angel being used interchangeably in here. Um, to God. So, uh, depending on the individual who is talking or given the revelation. Is using the word interchangeably, also is God. And then I come to the conclusion that, okay, if it's God, then which of the gods had is speaking. And from just the last one that we're looking at, I think it's God the son. So that is where I am.
Okay, good. No, I like, I like the way you sort of, where, you know, the, the deductive process that took you to your final conclusion. I think, I think that's how it's supposed to be. You see, one of the problems that has happened in the, in the body of Christ is that we now have. We are often not given the opportunity to form our own opinions based on solid evidence. What tends to happen is that we receive one sermon packed full of emotions. And we are swayed by the emotions behind the words. And so we then end up with a, an opinion that's really not founded on solid evidence, biblical evidence. But it's actually founded on the charisma of the person preaching. So if somebody questions us about it, suddenly we realize that we are familiar for words. We don't really know what to say. Okay, so there is a need to, to become familiar with the biblical evidence. And to then come to your own conclusion. Irene, I see your hand is up.
I can't say it right now, but, um, I feel like I have an answer to it.
Good.
So, um.
Yeah, Joel, welcome. And yeah, go for it.
Okay, so personally, I feel that, um, the angel of the Lord that showed up or appeared to Jacob. Was actually the son of Jesus Christ. The reason for that. Is that he was able to know everything that had happened to Jacob. Much before, at the beginning of his life, all the way to the things that were yet to happen to him. All the blessings and fortunes.
Okay, so the land is breaking up. I think I, I, I understand what you're trying to say, you know. So you're saying that. This person speaking to Jacob was definitely more than an angel, even the son of God.
That, that into some, um, you, you, everything that is happening. Just like how God, for that personal reason, I'm just saying, it's because he somehow. Being an angel of the Lord somehow knew everything that had happened, just like how God knew for each generation.
Yes, yes, I, I understand. Thank you very much. That's well spotted. Well done, um. Uh, Joel, I think you, you've been paying attention. Well done. Um, Irene, do you want to say something yourself? Irene.
Uh, I think you should go around, uh, 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 I'll speak later.
Irene knows it's going to be later. Let me see who else has. Oh, Reverend, um, I'll come back to you now. So, um, what do you think? Would you, who, who is this angel of the Lord?
Uh, thank you for that. Um, dwelling on scripture, um, this is my understanding. Um, this is said to the Pharisees. In the book of John five forty-six, he said, if you had believed Moses, you would have believed me, for he spoke of me. In the same Bible, the, the Bible says that the son of the woman will bruise the head of the serpent, Genesis three fifteen. We deduce that is Christ. And in the book of Corinthians, first Corinthians ten four, the Bible says, the rock that followed Israel was Christ. So there are many metaphors that is ascribed to Christ. Jesus said, no one has seen God. So for a manifestation to be made. And that individual ascribing such authority to himself. I believe that that person could be Christ. God the Son manifesting himself in different forms. I mean, this particular study, the angel of the Lord. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very, very well articulated. Thank you. Good, so, um. Who hasn't spoken? Araba, I think when we came to you, you were.
Uh, uh, I was speaking now.
Already now, okay, Irene.
I think, um. Based on what Reverend said, um, said right now, um, uh, I agree with him that it's.
Oh, your voice is gone. You've, um, I don't think reception is very good where you are right now. You probably get a better.
God the, the son scripture has referred to, um. Um, I said, in certain scriptures, Jesus has been referred to as a, a messenger of God. Because he, he carried a message, okay. And also, uh, by what Reverend said, he said. He said something that, um, that, uh, Christ is able to come in deeper form. Because we know him as the lamp of God, like that was him. So there, there, there could be the ability. Of the son to change form. And to, based on that assertion, it, it, it could, uh, he, he could have come like. It, it, the resemblance of an angel. Because he took the form of man to be born. So he has, he, he could have the ability. Or he has the ability to take different forms. So looking at that in scripture, I, I feel. It is the son.
Amen, amen.
The importance of the godhead.
Amen, that's very powerful. I think if I put the two, um, what you've said and what Reverend just. Amen. That's very powerful. I think if I put the two, what you've said and what Reverend just said together, what I get is this, that God has manifested himself in so many different ways through our time. But the Bible says in the last days, he's manifested himself through his Son, who is the exact representation of this person. Now, Jesus, when he took on flesh form, that's when you say we saw the fullest manifestation of God. But before that, he had been coming and showing snippets of himself, so to speak, to people. Those who had eyes could see, those who had spiritual eyes to see could see, they could discern. They could look at the form in front of them and look past it and see that they were dealing with God. Were dealing with God. But I also believe that we're talking about the Son here, because again, going back to what Reverend said earlier, the Bible says that God is invisible. No one has seen God. So if God is invisible, but the only begotten Son, who is in the bosom of the Father, he has revealed, then clearly, the, 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 the part of him that he could reveal was the Son. And he has revealed him, and he has been revealing him. There's so many other instances in the Bible. Now, I've focused on the angel of the Lord. In other words, that specific, you know, identity. Revealed and called the angel of the Lord. There are some more magnificent ones, which we'll talk, ones that we'll talk about next week. But we focus on the angel of the Lord, but there are other, other Christophernies that they, they call in appearance of Christ, you know. And we'll be able to look at this more closely next time we meet. Anyone else, anyone I've overlooked, who would like to say something, but I haven't given you an opportunity to do so? If so, then please feel free to.
I, I was about to speak when Irene came back.
Okay, okay.
And you know, you know, when Sue said that she doesn't know. I mean, also Shiloh also said the same thing. Like, they are not sure which of the godheads, you know, they are talking about here. At, at, at that point, I was also wondering that which of the godheads. And then from what Rev said, and then, I mean, since God the Father cannot take bodily form. You know, by his spirit, and you know, like, he has, no one has seen God. Then I tend to also, you know, it's the power of the, the, the Son. I'm not so sure, you know, because like Shiloh said, even this word is used interchangeably. Throughout the speaker, so sometimes, I mean, depending on the version you are reading, sometimes it can be confusing.
That's why it's good to do a study. You know, I recommend Bible Gateway and BibleStudystools.com. You know, these two, and when you're on BibleStudystools.com or Bible Hub, Bible Hub is another one. Look for the Interlinear Bible. Interlinear Bible. There, you can read the passage, and then you can click on the word. You know, to get to the Greek meaning or to get to the Hebrew meaning. Then you can tell, you don't have to rely on all the hundreds of different translations, what they think the meaning is. You can go to the source yourself and discover, you know, the exact meaning of, of those words. So that's what I did. And the word that has been translated, angel, angel of the Lord, is Malach, Malach. So it's angel Malach, but it can also be translated messenger, and has been translated messenger, and translated many other ways. Okay, so, so you can say the messenger of God, you can say something else. But the question is, if whether he's a messenger or angel or whatever, the question is, what business did he have accepting worship or expecting a sacrifice to be made to him when he was not God? No one, this is an honor God will not share with anybody, unless that person is actually part of him. So that is the basis for saying that whoever he is, now, we can debate which person of the godhead. But what we can't debate on is whether he's an angel or not an angel, because an angel doesn't have the right to make the claims that this person makes. Does that make sense, Arba?
Uh, well, sir, dog, but you know, I'm thinking of something, you know, real quick one. You know, some people will say that, okay, maybe they were in a situation, okay, maybe they had an accident or something. And someone came to save them, and they never saw the person again, and they think that he is an angel or something. In this, in this, in this instance, could it, is it, are we talking about angel of God or messenger? Like the Gabriel type? But if that is true, that, I mean, an angel can come and help in such a situation. Then is it, is it the Gabriel type of angel or the?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's debatable who would have appeared in a particular instance. You know, I think if it's the Lord, he will make sure that you know it's him. If it's the Lord, he'll make sure you know it's him. If it's an angel, he will come and do his task and just go away. So because he's, he's not, an angel has not been sent to come and fellowship with you. That's not his job. So he's not going to come and interact with you on a deep level. But if it's the Lord, he will, you will know. Most people who have had experience, I have not had experience like that. But people who have had an experience, where they have seen an open vision, where they've seen the Lord, they've always instantly, the Lord didn't even say, I'm Jesus. They just knew it was the Lord, because a spiritual experience, you will know that it's the Lord. But if someone comes in the form of a human being, helps you and disappears, assuming it's all a valid experience, then it would have to be an angel such as like the, the, the angel Gabriel visitation, that, that type, yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay.
You.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Uh, dog, me.
Okay.
Yeah, quickly. I will say, this is such an eye-opener. And it, I think it goes on to now really ma- makes me understand the Trinity properly more, and to, to see its validity. Because we know there is a lot of debate out there that there's nothing like the Trinity. But this teaching has taken it to a different level altogether. And whilst we are on there, whilst I was listening to your daily teaching on, I, I don't know whether it was the daily teaching or it's still on this Trinity thing. And you were talking about the soul, spirit, and the body, and how the, how the soul, how the spirit cannot travel out. I'm, I'm not sure, I've forgotten how you actually presented it. But what I wanted to ask was on dreams. So for instance, if we dream, what happens? When we dreaming, what happens to our spirit or our, I know it might not be our soul that leads the body. What part of the, three parts of us that dream?
Okay, that's a good question. I've never been asked that question before. I have to.
I don't know. I was asking myself, because listening to you, I was just questioning that. Because I'm just to know, do we, do, do this, I don't, do we separate at some point? I don't know.
No, I don't think we do. I don't think there's separation happening there. Dreams happen to everybody. They happen to believers, they happen to unbelievers. You know, God's to believe us in dreams speaks to unbelievers in dreams. So it, it's something that we can have regardless of the state of our spirit, it's clear. So I don't believe it is spiritual in the sense that it sits within your spirit. It must be a soulish experience, must be within the soul. But, yes, but when you're asleep, you essentially, what's happening is, it's almost like, I mean, there is research evidence that shows that, you know, the brain is not completely shut down when you are sleeping. There's still a lot of activity going on in the brain. And that, when you start dreaming, the brain actually starts showing increased activity, almost as if someone is thinking intensively. That's how it is. So when you are dreaming, is your brain working in the same way as it would have been working if you were thinking or daydreaming, for example, except that you are not conscious. So the part of your body, of the brain that responsible for conscious, consciousness has been, if you like, not shut down, but dulled at that time. So you don't have the same control over the process as you might have done if you were awake. And so that's why sometimes dreams can be so wild and so bizarre, okay? But God also has ability to permeate that process and to reveal himself to us in the dream. But I don't think you can really apply the spirit soul concept to dreams, or so, at least I haven't tried to do that before. So it's a first one for me, but good, well, well done for, for considering it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I've had, I've had a very beautiful experience. And maybe I will share it as the next, in the next class. But I have a question. Um, you know, um, in scripture, it's been written, the angel of, in this church, like, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure, but I, I've seen it in scripture before. And I, you know, charismatics, I've gone to churches where the, the preacher or a junior pastor who is probably leading service before the overseer will come. Who, who say that the angel of this church, like the angel of that, the particular angel set over that particular assembly, eh, 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 is doing A, B, C, D. And I've even heard to, to a point, I've gone to a church where the person was trying to say that the angel in, in, in our dispensation, the angel set over a church is a set man of the house, meaning that the, 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 the pastor or the general overseer can be like, can be seen as the representative of, like, because they're representative of God, and it is the angel of that house. And I don't, I, I don't agree personally. I don't, I, I don't, I don't see how that is scripturally correct. But they always use that scripture where the angel of the church of this, to mean that there are angels set over churches, over nations, over jurisdiction, and even over individual's life. So everybody has some garden following them. So I want you to address that if you could in our subsequent lesson.
Okay, good. So I'll bear that in mind and, yes, and, and, and touch on that. But it's interesting just how many doctrines one can easily draw from just a couple of passages in the Bible if one wants to, you know. The problem, one of the problems facing us right now is that sometimes we already have ideas. We already sort of know where we want to go with our ideas, and we just look for Bible passages to carry us there. That's really what the problem is. So if a person wants to sort of magnify their pastor or their general overseer, I've, I've noticed a phenomenon where it's not just, if it's not even the man of God begging himself up, it's the people around him begging him up. And saying things like, oh, you are a human being. Sometimes we, we can destroy other people with our lips, you know. We lift them up, we lift them up. The Bible says that wassuava is exalted, it's an abomination to God. So you lift the person up until it becomes an abomination to God. And then it's not surprising that the person then crashes, and then finds himself in some sort of, a scandal. We destroy people with our words, the way we big them up. I sat in a, in a church service once where this young preacher, just like you, you just described, a young preacher who was talking about his pastor in front of him, the pastor was there. It was as if he was describing God. It was incredible, the words that he was using. Then when he finished, he turned and started addressing the pastor's wife. It was like two angels that he was talking to, talking about, oh, God. It's not right. It's not right. It was not, you know, you are setting them up to fail. You know, so then you just find a Bible passage that says the angel of the church in Ephesus, and you're going to use that. Forget about the passage for a minute and ask yourself, where are your motives? What are you trying to achieve? Whom are you trying to resemble with your conduct? Would Jesus do what you're doing? Does it matter whether there's a passage that says that an angel could be a human being or whatever? That's not the issue. The issue is where is your heart? Why do you even have a need to say those words about a human being? You saw how the angel protested, don't worship me, don't turn your attention on me. Why would you gather people, get people to turn their attention on the fellow human being? Are you trying to destroy him? You know, so sometimes we, we don't even have to worry too much about whether there is a passage in the Bible that says this or that. Check the motives, and you will know clearly whether you're dealing with something that is of God or not. Okay, I think we're going to end here. And we'll meet again to continue. There's so plenty of material, so do please come next week. You have a lovely weekend. I see you next week by God's grace.